Before we call the meeting to order, we'll have a prayer by Councilman Kemna followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God bless us, you are our refuge, you are our rock, you are our strength. We have faith and you will carry us through to be proud as we pray your name and all the good that we see. Thank you bless in our communities and all the lives of you who are spared because of the baptisms that have come our way. We pray for those that have been impacted by these events and that we do not have to retract or debate what we do that we built ahead of us. We pray that you continue to guide our steps, we pray that you be the example that you set for leaders in this community, for politicians and personnel, for community leaders, for neighbors, volunteers, friends, strangers, all steps we do. You are a great God and we know who you are in your life. We ask all you things.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now call the meeting to order. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
Hensley.
Present.
Hussey.
Here.
Kemna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Item four, I'm sorry, item three, I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda. Councilman Mahalovich?
I'd like to amend the agenda to add item 6B regarding...
4B, 4?
Yes, 4B, excuse me, regarding JC Strong Day.
Any objections? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 4, miscellaneous agenda items, so we will move forward as amended here, and we're going to start by talking a little bit about this last week and a half that we've had here in Jefferson City and how our community has really come together and certainly has been a very trying time for the community, but we are very thankful when you consider what we've been through between the flooding and the tornado damage and the significant amount of damage, that we are, you know, very thankful that it was not as bad as it could have been truly, and we're very fortunate. And we have a great team here at the city and thankful for each and every one of you. So, we are going to start by declaring JC Strong Day. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas our community will not be defined by the May 22nd, 2019 tornado, but rather in how we came together to overcome the challenges. And whereas, along with the city council, we are thankful for the response of Jefferson City Police Department, Jefferson City Fire Department, county, state, and many surrounding public safety and law enforcement agencies, along with all city departments who responded instantly and without hesitation. And whereas, people listened to and heeded the outdoor warning sirens along with the local news media warning and took shelter from the approaching storm. And whereas, despite record flooding of the Missouri River occurring at the same time as the tornado, we are still a community that is resilient and will only emerge stronger. And whereas, hashtag JCStrong has become the rally of our community, and we know that one day at a time, we will rebuild and become JC stronger. And whereas, we will rebuild, we will stay strong. Items can be replaced, but what matters most is each other. Those winds were strong, but we are stronger. Now therefore, I, Kerry Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim from here on, May 22nd, as JC Strong Day in the City of Jefferson, and we will forever remember and appreciate the volunteers, organizations, neighbors helping neighbors, and prayers for our city. So with that, we're very thankful and we are designating May 22nd as a day that we will remember, but that we will get stronger from and move forward from. Pertaining to the last couple of weeks, I do have some information I'd like to share also. If you go to the city's website, JeffersonCityMo.gov, there are many helpful links that are available for people to have information. There's tornado relief and volunteer opportunities. There's a link for United Way if you want to dial the 211 if you need assistance or if you want to help, you can dial 211. There's a link for legal assistance for disaster recovery, information about the mark which was held last week, information about avoiding scams and unethical business practices during rebuilding processes. Missouri River Regional Library is hosting a Community Lost and Found, that link is on there. Public Works Data for the tornado and flood efforts, a debris diagram and instructions, and then information about the two bills that were passed during a special city council meeting last week pertaining to building permit fee reduction ordinance and the application for temporary housing permit including RV, campers, and trailers. There's also flood information on the city's website. Again, it's JeffersonCityMo.gov, it's on the homepage, all of that information is listed there, you can share that. And keeping in mind when it comes to the flood, to allow extra time when you're out and about in Jefferson City, a lot of our normal routes have some closures, east-west, there's High Street and Highway 50 are open at this time, but of course, a lot of the side streets are impacted, so please allow extra time and patience when you are traveling through the city and know that your normal route, even though you might not be going over one of those streets, might be impacted by traffic that's trying to get there. So, we just ask that everybody proceed with patience and we appreciate everyone and all the volunteers and help that we've had to get us through this week, but we will stay strong. So, with that, I will turn it over to council members if they have anything they would like to add with JCStrong, and then ask staff if there's any other announcements pertaining to this tornado events. Anything to add at this time? Councilman Mahalovich?
There are several GoFundMe opportunities to contribute money. One is Capitol Avenue Restoration Fund, so if you go to GoFundMe and go to Jefferson City, there's several requests for tornado relief.
Thank you for bringing that up. Also, the Convention and Visitors Bureau has a fund for the Historic Penitentiary Rebuilding Fund, and that also has a GoFundMe, or you can take a check to the Convention and Visitors Bureau office, and that is through their, they have a foundation, the Convention and Visitors Bureau has, so through the foundation, people can donate there as well. There were a couple benefits recently, yesterday was Jam for Jefferson City. I know that Columbia hosted at their Blue Note, an event on Thursday night. I know there's probably countless more, so certainly if council knows of those, we could get the word out. The Concert Inside the Walls also hosted a collection for monetary and item donations, and there's many more, so we appreciate the giving nature of our community. Several of our council members were taking the lead on getting out in the neighborhoods as well. I know Councilman Hensley led an effort along with, Councilman Hussey and Laura were out and about in many neighborhoods. I know Kemna was out, I know all of you, actually, there weren't any that were not out. Carlos was working with Lincoln, I know Mark was engaged, actually, every single one of you, Councilman Fitzwater was out walking around too, and at a lot of the sites where there were people, so, and I know Rick had to be out for a little bit, but I said the work will continue, and I know that there will be plenty more to do, so I just want to take a moment to highlight council and city staff and our public safety. Everybody in this room really worked together. So, with that, I would like to get a picture with our JC Strong Day. Oh, Councilwoman Ward.
And I just wanted to add, we did have one death. It wasn't in, within our city limits, but it was in Cole County, so I would just like to extend our sincere sympathy to that individual's family and friends, and at this time, just like to have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ward, and our sympathies as well. Are there any other council announcements, or would city staff like to make any other announcements in addition to what's listed currently on the website? Anything new? Okay. So please use the website as a resource. At this time, we'll have a picture with our proclamation, and Gail isn't here, so that be, Ryan is assigned, okay. All right, JC Strong Day, May 22nd, from now on. Okay. presentation by Hannah Berenzin about the National JCMG Podiatry, the Bunyan Correction Day, we'll say. So I would like to invite you forward, and then we could also have our doctors come forward as well and explain just exactly what is Bunyan Day and why we are celebrating that.
Thank you, Mayor Turgeon. It is my pleasure to introduce the two surgeons in Jefferson City who are performing this groundbreaking procedure, and so I have Dr. JP McAllier and Dr. William Duke, and they are going to speak on the procedure just a little bit.
Mayor and councilwomen and councilmen, thank you very much for having us here. We're delighted to come here, it's an honor to be before you to kind of discuss what we're doing in our practice. We're very much champions for the community health here in Jefferson City, Missouri, and mid-Missouri in general. Both myself and my partner, Dr. Duke, have been performing a three-dimensional bunyan correction known as lapoplasty. We're very, very proud of our practice to be the first physicians in the state of Missouri to perform this procedure. It's different than any other type of bunyan procedure that has been out there, as it corrects the problem at the root of its cause, which provides our patients with beneficial long-term outcomes and really does fix the problem right the first time.
One of the other interesting things about this procedure is that patients are able to walk right away. They can get back to their activities much quicker, and hopefully, we can limit the number of scooters and crutches that everybody sees around town. By getting people back to their activities much quicker, we keep them from experiencing a lot of other risks associated with other corrections, and like Dr. McAllier mentioned, the chance of this coming back, less than 1%. So we're providing patients care one time so that they can be happy with it for life.
Not to belabor the point, but I also like to add that both Dr. Duke and myself are actively involved in physician education nationwide, so it's very exciting to be among some of the most experienced surgeons in the United States currently that are performing this procedure here in Jefferson City, and we're very proud to represent our city and our state. And we meet and speak with surgeons from around the United States on a regular basis in all different corners, and we are putting Jefferson City on the map and very proud to do so when we discuss this procedure with other doctors across the US.
Well, you really make us proud in representing Jefferson City, and to know that you're the first one in the state offering this is really important, we're glad to hear that, and we really appreciate what you're doing nationwide as well in representing Jefferson City. So, I'll ask at this time, does council have any questions?
I just want to say that I wish I'd have known about this procedure about two months ago, because my wife went through, my wife had the procedure done about two months ago, and it was hectic on me. I know, as relates to her little bell she had, that she was ringing because she couldn't walk, and it was also on her right foot, so she couldn't drive, so certainly, I was in pain as well, too, so. But I'm going to tell her about this new procedure that's out in case she has to do it again, so.
Well, Councilwoman Graham, hopefully she won't have to have it redone, but if you have any other family members, you send them our way, we'll take care of them.
I will, I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, and that's why we want to recognize this, because you are, you're helping people, and also, it is something that, being a leader in the state, when you're right here based in Missouri, you're also going to see people from around the state that will likely be coming to Jefferson City just to have this done. So we appreciate the work that you're doing and keep promoting Jefferson City out there, and we're glad to learn about this. It's something that frankly, I had never heard of myself either. So, with that, I have a proclamation for each of you, Dr. McAllier and Dr. Duke, so we'll get a picture with the proclamations. No need to bring any bunions forward, just keep your bunions to yourself in the picture.
We will do free consults in the back if anyone...
And I should have mentioned to you, both have your families here, so after we get a picture, if they would like to come forward with a picture, I know you have your family and children as well, so we would invite them up as well after we get our first picture. but thank you and congratulations. All right, item 5, we have no public hearings. Item 6, appointments from the mayor. We have one recommendation for planning and zoning, Mr. Chris Yornell, who will be serving a term that requires a two-thirds majority. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And also, this evening, do we have any Boy Scouts in the audience? Wonderful, welcome, we're glad to have you here. Would you like to come up to the podium and give us your name and what school you are attending?
I am Jeremy Longnick, and I go to Trinity Lutheran School.
Great. Are you working on any certain badge right now?
Citizenship in the community.
Wonderful, great, I notice your shirt has a camp on there. Have you been doing some camping out lately?
Um, no.
Not yet?
Yeah, next month.
Next month, okay, wonderful. Well, welcome to our city council meeting, we're glad to have you here, and good luck with your badge.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item 7, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests, we have none this evening. And item 8, announcements from mayor, council, and staff. I'll remind you that JeffersonCityMo.gov has our full meeting calendar. At this time, are there any committee meeting reports? Okay, and I believe in the administration has been canceled for this week. So, any other announcements there? I'll announce that the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament was held on Friday, that's the 13th annual, it was started by Mayor John Landwehr, and appreciate Councilman Kemna for playing in that this year, and I don't know if I missed any others, I think, I appreciate that. And also, I mentioned we held the Concert Inside the Walls. If you missed the serenade at last council meeting, then I'm sorry for you, but it's recorded for the whole world to see, so don't worry about it, Councilman Hensley, if you missed it, you can just check our YouTube channel and see the serenade of council members led by Councilman Hensley on the guitar. You're welcome, we could have used you, we got through about the first two songs, and then Mother Nature had other plans for the concert, but I do have to say, considering that in one week, we were able to move that event from the Historic Penitentiary, which unfortunately sustained heavy tornado damage, and within one week, having to move it, we're thankful to the Jefferson City JCs for allowing that to be held there at the fairgrounds, and Dennis DeYoung performed a couple of songs until the lightning storm came through. But regardless, we were just happy to be together, and honestly, after a few events that we've had, things seemed to be in a different perspective, so people were just happy to be together and have a moment to kind of celebrate despite the outcome for the rest of the evening. Any other council announcements? Item B, we have our Missouri 2021 Bicentennial Moment, and that is to remind everyone to follow the bicentennial on Instagram @Missouri2021 if you aren't already. Lincoln University student update, Ms. Carolyn Wanjaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council as a whole. First and foremost, I would like to share that the Lincoln University Blue Tiger Family would like to send our condolences to all the families who were affected by the tornado, including our own president, and to know that we have you all in our prayers, as well as support and with donations. I know I was just asking Chief Scoville if I wanted to donate some things where I could go, and he sent me the information, thank you very much. And secondly, we would like to congratulate the Blue Tigers' men's and women's track and field team. They are three years in a row national champions, and so we are very proud of them for that. Thank you.
Congratulations. That is some fantastic news, so we're very happy about that. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions, we have Mr. Glover Brown signed up.
I'm doing better. Thank you all for this opportunity tonight. Madam Mayor, distinguished council members, the chiefs of both fire and police departments, respectively, to both administrative and city staff, I would like to say thank you for the great leadership you demonstrated to the citizens of Jefferson City, and for that fact to the world during the tragic incident and aftermath of the devastating tornado that moved through Jefferson City late night on Wednesday and early hours of May 22nd. Thank you to the many state and local agencies that responded to the call for help, and to the many law enforcement agencies who responded from the surrounding area who came and assisted in providing the safety and security to our citizens during that horrific time. Thank you to the wave of volunteers who arrived on our doorstep to lend assistance in ways unimaginable. Thank you to the citizens of Jefferson City who demonstrated their will to come together as a community when their neighbors were in need. Once again, living up to the old adage, the show me steak. I'm getting a little emotional. Living up to the creed of, give me one reason why I can't do something, and I'll give you two reasons as to why I can. Madam Mayor, distinguished council members, I would like to announce that with the help of the Friends of Lafayette Street and the Historic Foot District, we have secured a commitment from a commercial developer, Enterprise Commercial Group, and Williams and Kramer of Springfield, Missouri, to come to Jefferson City and give consideration in helping to kickstart the revitalization and restoration of the Capitol Street Historic Overlay District. They have agreed to consider revitalizing and restoring some 42 properties in the Capitol Avenue Overlay District. As I understand, they are in negotiations now with the local owners and with the local housing authority. In addition, they have agreed to consider an economic development project at the corners of Lafayette and McCarty Street. My assistants passing around some photographs. For the purpose of helping to bring back an economic driver to the community, to help provide jobs, a social environment, and business opportunities by providing potential office and retail space to foster growth in the area. Many years ago, I was part of a group called Up With People and Sing Out Jefferson City. In addition to community service, another way we delivered our message of hope, freedom, and love of country, and the vision of a new world, was through song. We performed a song called Wake Up Everybody, and there was a line in the song that said, "Wake up everybody, no more backwards thinking, only time for thinking ahead." The world has changed so very much from what it used to be. The world won't get no better if we just let it be. The only thing we have to do is put it in our mind that surely things will work out. They do it every time. The world won't get no better if we just let it be. We've got to change the world, just you and me. Like the phoenix rising from the ashes and building on the old, this is an opportunity for Jefferson City to build something from the old, a brand-new tomorrow like it never had before. Yes, there's a better way, I know there's got to be. The weight is just too heavy, and alone, we'll never see that the world we can build together, nothing like before, with a new life to fill the emptiness of the tragedy that we suffered forever and forevermore. With that, I say thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Item 11, consent agendas, there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced, 2019-18.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a sanitary sewer easement over and between properties addressed of 1720 and 1736 Beath Drive in the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This is basically a property cleanup issue over off of redevelopment parcel. They found a sanitary sewer easement that was no longer needed on the property, and this would vacate that easement.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Item 13, bills pending, 2019-12.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing the Double Eagle Court right-of-way and all easements dedicated to the plat of Double Eagle subdivision.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would vacate all the right-of-way and easements with the Double Eagle subdivision, small subdivision from many years back, and was never constructed, and this would vacate that.
Okay, any questions or deliberation? Roll call please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes. 2019-13.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 by replacing yield signs
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 by replacing yield signs with stop signs at Southern Air Drive and Royal Air Drive before entering Bel Air Drive.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Citizen requests to traffic and transportation to replace the yield signs with stop signs entering the streets, as the clerk indicated.
Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kymna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes, 2019-14.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 of the code of the City of Jefferson by modifying the side parking removal on Lee Street between Morrow Drive and a .340 feet east of Morrow Drive.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Again, another transportation and traffic request. A few meetings back, the council enacted a no parking zone along the entire length of one side of Lee Street. This modification brought forward by the residents of that street would just modify the no parking to two different zones. So it still has continuous no parking, it's just on different sides of the street.
Thank you. Any questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kymna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes, 2019-4.
An ord-
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll ask the sponsor, yes, if you'd like to take that off the informal. Thank you, Councilwoman Ward.
2019-4, an ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri designating 204 East High Street as a local historic landmark.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would approve a local landmark designation request by the property owner for 204 East High Street, the Historic Exchange Bank Building. It's been through the Historic Preservation Commission with a recommendation for approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? Councilman Fitzwater.
Yeah, I just want to make a brief comment. I had expressed some concerns, not in regard to that building, but in regard to the two that sit beside it, just because of some potential, you know, what happens to those two buildings. But I think walking down Capitol Avenue on the morning of May 23, looking at some of the beautiful buildings that will never have the opportunity to put a plaque on, I think the advantages of proceeding with this moving forward outweigh the concerns. I still have the concerns, but it looks like it's going to be a protracted process before we ever do get to a final resolution. So I have not lobbied anybody on the council. I've talked to a couple of members, but I myself am going to support the motion.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. Any further comments? Councilwoman Ward.
I'd just like to thank you for those comments. I think city staff, our engineers, have determined that this is a standalone structure and that those two buildings are not affecting the structure of this building. So I would ask that my fellow councilmen please consider supporting this as a landmark.
Thank you. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Kymna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes, 2019-7. And would Councilman Graham like to pull that off?
Yes, I would like to pull 2019-007 off the informal calendar.
Okay. And seeing no objections, we'll move forward with the bill reading.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to medical marijuana facilities.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this is a standard text ordinance changing our zoning code to include three of the four uses approved by the voters of Missouri regarding the medical marijuana. They are a cultivation facility, a manufacturing facility, and also a testing facility. This text amendment would permit them in M1 and M2, light and general industrial areas that are zoned M1 and M2, and also that are 1,000 feet away from a school, a daycare, or a church, 1,000 feet by walking distance from certain parts of the building to that certain property. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes, 2019-1.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute extensions to tolling agreements.
Mr. Mulman.
Thank you. Last year, the city council approved tolling agreements with providers of cellular service here in the city. What those tolling agreements did, essentially, it delays the running of the statute of limitations for any suits to collect unpaid or delinquent business license taxes, or here in Jefferson City, it's known as the GRET, grocery receipts utility taxes. The purpose is so that the cities, like Jefferson City, and this is in conjunction with many other cities throughout the state, can take a look at the practices of cellular companies and determine if their payment of utility grocery receipts taxes on telephone service is consistent with the ordinances in Missouri law. And so the telephone companies thought it to be in their best interest to allow cities extra time to kind of study the taxation practices and the billing practices of the telephone companies, determine if they were in line, as opposed to a bunch of cities lining up to file lawsuits, so that way the statute of limitations doesn't go away and potential revenue is lost. The reason that these agreements are getting extended, there is a Supreme Court case in Missouri Supreme Court that is currently pending that is going to answer a lot of the legal issues that go into determining how telephone companies are appropriately calculating grocery receipts taxes. The case is called City of Aurora versus CenturyLink, and that case has been pending in the Supreme Court for over a year now, and that is a very long time for a Supreme Court case. So everyone thought we would be done with this question, and we would have guidance from the Supreme Court by the time these agreements ran out, but that has just turned out to not be the case. The Supreme Court has not made its decision yet. So this is an extension of those previously made tolling agreements, really to allow time for the Supreme Court to make their decision, and that way all parties involved have a clear indication of the legal issues that go into how companies are calculating their grocery receipt taxes. So this carries a recommendation of approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve, 2019-1?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes, 2019-2.
A resolution exercising authority under Article 10 of the work agreement between the City of Jefferson and Local 671 IAAF related to minimum manning strength.
Chief Schofield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a resolution that grants temporary authority to the fire department to adjust their daily staffing strength. And so it is a retroactive resolution that would apply starting 22 May and continuing on potentially through the flood event that we're currently in. So we don't know for sure exactly the extent of the current flooding situation and how long a duration that event will be, but we're seeking the temporary authority during that declared disaster to be able to adjust staffing sufficient to handle the incident as it escalates potentially and unfolds. So it is consistent with staffing up that was contemplated and occurred during the '93 and '95 flood. In fact, when we look at the flood planning documents that the city produced as an after-action, they had certain triggers where they recommended staffing additional boats and quick-response vehicles. And I believe they also staffed at certain points during the highest points of the flood, additional suppression personnel on engine companies or tankers to make sure that all the areas of the city were covered. So while we don't know the full extent of the staffing requirements that may be needed in the flood, you know, we're hopeful that we're at the end of that event, but we don't know. So we're just asking for the authority to temporarily adjust that daily staffing number so that we can be sufficiently prepared to respond appropriately within the incident. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Schofield? Is there a motion to approve, RS 2019-2?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes, 2016. We have no one signed up under presentations from the gallery and other topics. I want to back up to Councilman Schofield. Please express our appreciation to all in your department for the extra work they're doing with the flooding and everything else that you are explaining why we even need this, but please let them know how thankful we are. Item 17, any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Item 18, new business. I will ask Ms. Donaldson to read the closed session. Sorry.
We'll close it under.
Let's close this meeting.
Section 610 dot 21 subsection 19 in existing or proposed security systems.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes, 2016. We have no one signed up under presentations from the gallery and other topics. I want to back up to Councilman Schofield. Please express our appreciation to all in your department for the extra work they're doing with the flooding and everything else that you are explaining why we even need this, but please let them know how thankful we are. Item 17, any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Item 18, new business. I will ask Ms. Donaldson to read the closed session. Sorry.
We'll close it under.
Let's close this meeting.
Section 610 dot 21 subsection 19 in existing or proposed security systems.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes, 2016.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kymna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
All right. So we will be going now into closed session. Before we do, I want to mention to our Boy Scout who's still here that this is unusual to have a meeting this quick. Typically, they're longer. But if you would like to, if you have any questions for us, we'll go into closed session here right now, but you're welcome to come up, and we'd be happy to, if you have any questions, since we happen to be early, feel free to come up and ask us. A lot of those bills that we talked about, we have committee meetings that we go over, so that's why we discuss a lot of it at length there, and they're introduced at the first meeting and read at the second. So a lot of those, we were able to get through fairly quick. But feel free to ask us if you have any other questions. We appreciate you all being here, and thanks to everyone for coming tonight. And we are in closed session here in this room as soon as the room is empty. So thank you all.